Good evening. We call this meeting a Fairfield County Council order, Monday, December 10, 2018, at 6:00 PM. First item is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Motion has been made and properly seconded that council approved the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of six to zero, the agenda is approved. We're now down to the invocation. Councilmember Roof.
Hello, Speaker. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. But we just ask that you guide and direct us as we make decisions for this county and that everything we do and say will be according to your will. And, Lord, we also ask that during this holiday season that you help us to remember that Jesus is the reason for the season. And, Lord, we also ask that as we travel back to our homes that you all give us, that you give us safe travel mercy back to our respective homes. And we ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Roof. We're now down to the approval of minutes from our last two meetings, regular meeting, November 26, 2018, and the special meeting, the same date. Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve those minutes as presented. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of six to zero, those minutes are approved. We have no public presentations for tonight. We do have some folks who've signed up for public comment. Miss Davis?
We have 10 who wish to speak tonight. First, Laura Willingham, speaking on rehab.
First, I would like to thank you for your determination to keep rehab in Fairfield County for their residents. I appreciate each of you genuinely listening to me and my concerns when I came to y'all last May. I know the residents and the rehab staff here truly appreciate that. I also want to thank you for your efforts through this transition of those services. I'd like to ask for assistance that whatever has been planned or is in place is in the best interest of the community and our patients, not only for continued care but for future care as well, as that has always been our main focus. I have enjoyed and it has been a pleasure working with the residents and being part of this community for the past two years. I wish y'all well.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Tanja Alafant, speaking on rehab.
I just wanted to say personally, thank you. Thank you for keeping rehab here. You make a personal bond with the patients and honestly, I don't know how they would get anywhere else for their treatment. And I appreciate every one of you for what you've done for them. Thanks.
Next, Ms. Diane Johnson, speaking on rehab.
My name is Diane. I'm PTA at Fairfield Rehab. We just wanted to say thank you for the transition, all your help through everything, and we hope to expedite the process as quick as possible so that we can get our patients back in the door. Okay? Thank you.
Next, Ms. Nicole Derrick, speaking on rehab.
I'm Nicole Derrick, physical therapist, and I appreciate all the opportunities that I've been given. I've really gotten to know the people and love the people in this county. This is where my heart is. So, just what's on my heart, please keep us open and please continue to look after us so that we can serve this county well.
Next, Mr. David, I believe this is Pegram, speaking on rehab.
First, thank you guys for having me. I'd like to say that I was asked to come here by Laura. I've had some conversations with these folks over the last few weeks, you know, getting more familiar with the situation and what's going on up here and becoming more familiar with it. They've asked me to come to speak to you as an alternative to what you currently have on the docket. I am owner, physical therapist of Physical Rehabilitation Group. I am a private practice here in South Carolina. What do I bring to the table that might be an alternative you guys might, would like to consider? It's a small business. You know, it's, we have locations throughout South Carolina, especially in rural South Carolina. Rural South Carolina has a very unique set of needs as well as considerations that we are very familiar with just because of where we have worked around other rural communities. So, we're very familiar with small towns and trying to meet those needs that these ladies have already expressed to you. The other advantages of considering us being a small business over a larger entity is simple logistics. You need something, you talk to me. You don't have to run it up a flagpole after flagpole. You don't get to deal with the lovely bureaucracy of larger entities. And let me say, the larger entity that you guys are considering, and I have not ill-will to say to them, my wife works for them currently. So, you know, this is more of a presentation on their behalf as to give you an alternative that they feel like would be as equally as suitable as to what you currently have from a lease agreement, since that's primarily what you guys are considering. I would like to say if this is something to be considered by you guys, let us know, and I would be glad to give you guys a presentation. I know I've spoken briefly with Jason. He kind of has a pretty good idea about what I bring to the table. And just feel like it's an opportunity that I would look forward to, that I feel like I could bring a lot to your community. I live in Columbia, so I'm only hop, skip, and jumping away. And that I feel like coming up here especially with these ladies is, even though it's been brief, my conversations with them, you guys have got a good crew up here. They're very passionate about this community. They're very passionate about their caseload and are very anxious to get some stability, help them sleep a little easier at night. So, thank you for your time. Again, any questions, I'm sure you can contact Laura, or I'll be glad to give you some information on me afterwards. I know Jason has some on me already as well. So, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Kathy Falk, speaking on the animal ordinance.
I'm Kathy Falk. I'm a resident of Fairfield County and the Community Outreach Director of Hoof and Paw. Tonight, once again, I stand before you on behalf of Hoof and Paw to say thank you. Four weeks ago, I attended the first reading of the proposed animal ordinance, and I was impressed with the work that council is doing to improve the quality of living in Fairfield County. You spoke about water, sewage, education, jobs, substance abuse programs, et cetera. Understanding that improving how we care for our animals is a vital and crucial part of these changes, our regard for life, human or animal, it's all related, and it's so very important and a reflection of who we are as human beings. Thank you, counsel, for addressing all of these issues and recognizing the need for updating the animal ordinance in the county. It's time to put an end to animal abuse and neglect in Fairfield County. Hoof and Paw will continue to work towards this goal. So, on behalf of Hoof and Paw, we applaud you. This is a wonderful beginning, and we look forward to the future. We would also like to say thank you to Mr. Smith for your service and your hard work. You will be missed, and we wish you well in this next phase of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Virgil Porter, speaking on economic development. Thank you. Next, Mr. William Coleman, speaking on animal control.
Thank you. I'm William Coleman. I'm a farmer in the Blair area of this county. First off, let me say that I agree with the parts of this proposed animal control ordinance when it comes to abuse, neglect, and so forth. However, as we all know, when there's an effort to control the bad, sometimes the good gets a raw deal. It came to my attention that the proposed ordinance that I have that was sent to me to draft has had some changes, so I got to kind of change my wording just a little bit about this. But my issue is about a dog being, as they call it, under restraint. In the ordinance I have, it said that the dog had to be under restraint at all times, pretty much. I understand now it's been changed, that it doesn't have to be under restraint if it's on the lands of the owner. I had a question about, am I considered the owner of a leased piece of property? I was assured that I am. I'm in the cattle business. If I have an employee working for me that has a cattle dog, does this mean that his cattle dog has got to be under restraint? On a lease, when we go to work our cows, it says owner. And also, if you've got a lease on hunting property, if the hunting property is in my name, does that mean to other people in the hunting club, if they bring a dog there, it has got to be on the lease? I'm just wanting to get all this stuff out in the open, okay? I don't know whether the thing about collars on every dog and cat in the county is still in the new ordinance, but can you imagine catching all the yard cats around in the county and putting a collar on them? And how many of them would get hung up because of this collar and die? Is this really humane? Next thing I have a question about is striking a pet with an automobile or a bike. Is someone always with animal control going to be on call when that happens? Are we going to have to hire more employees for this county to be able to take care of that? And I certainly don't hope that this ends up going, these calls end up going to the county sheriff's department, because they've got enough to do. Next thing is dealing with nuisance animal states that every female animal, animal in heat shall be kept confined in a building of secure enclosure. I've got cows. They come in heat once a month unless they're bred. What is a secure enclosure? I've got a barbed wire fence. Is that secure enough? I don't think so. A bull can tear that down. I don't have enough space to put it in a corralled area. Folks, I think it needs some more work on this. I know y'all might think you're doing a good job, and you have, but let's just leave, let's just stick to the abuse part of it rather than the rest of it. You start restraining these animals, it's going to be more, all these yard dogs are not going to be yard dogs anymore. They're going to be on a tether. And then what you're going to have, you're going to have more abuse, more neglected dogs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. Jeff Schaefer, speaking on animal control.
I changed my mind. You got abused enough with the animal control. But the truth is, what he says is true. Common sense should dictate to us what we need to do, what we don't need to do. Of course, common sense is now dead, and respect is gone, so I'll let you all figure it out. But you know obviously that some of these things are not realistic for the people that live here. Put a cat on a leash? Can you picture me walking my cat? That's not going to work. You can picture my dogs. Most of you know I've got some big dogs, and they're on my property, and I don't leash them. I'm on 450 acres. There's no reason for it. There's nobody around. And if you're around on my property, you don't belong there. Go get them, boy. And there was something in there about being attacked by a dog. The first time you're attacked, then there's a second time? No, the first time you're attacked, something's got to be done. So, these things that were in the original document need to be reworded. I spoke to Billy about it and some others, and I'm sure you know that we need to refine that a little bit. Rehab, I don't want to say something about rehab. I'm a victim of your rehab, a good victim. I was treated like a king. You folks did a great job on me, and I'm, my wife's a physical therapist, I'm a board-certified orthotist, I own the surgical supply company in my past, and I understand the need for physical therapy, and we have terrific physical therapists here, really terrific, and we need to keep them. And more importantly, when you have good people, you need to keep these good people happy. And that may cost us some money, but too bad. We spend too much money on junk. Let's give it to people who are helping people. I think that's more important than anything else. I don't want to take too much time because I'm going to come back up here and browbeat you a little bit, but I'll let that go, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on economic development and animal ordinance.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield County. I agree with Jeff and William Coleman. There's a little bit of wordsmithing to go, some tweaking of some of the common sense abnormalities that have been pointed out. However, the overall step is tremendous for this county and the quality of life, not just for animals but for everyone. And we talked about before that we're trying to clean up the blight and clean up our less-than-sterling reputation among some quarters, and this is a great step for that. It's a great step for animals, humans, and Fairfield County in itself. One other aspect that was kind of touched upon, but going on the animal ordinance, and that's dogs off-leash who do attack people. And I want to ensure that we, number one, there's a state law, and number two, ensure that we don't deviate from that whatsoever. Some of you are aware that my wife and two of our dogs have been attacked twice, and we live five minutes from downtown Ridgeway. One dog almost died. Both my wife and dog had serious medical injuries, and we rang up huge bills, but that's not the issue. The issue is these dogs were off-leash, and they attacked my wife and our dogs who were on leash. So, let's not be sure that we get soft on that issue. But overall, it's a good bill, but I think William had some great points as far as wordsmithing to get the common sense laws out of the way. And economic development is the other issue. General comment, and I'll get to some specifics in later speeches. I'm on here, I think, six times for the evening. It is interesting to note that we have four economic-related, and this is pretty true of most of the meetings, economic development-related topics on the agenda tonight. And it's not just specific economic development. The rehab is economic development, big time, and the animal ordinances are economic development, big time. And so much what you have in your topics is related to economic development. We hadn't seen this in the previous years. It just wasn't a mindset. And I don't think you guys are doing this by accident, because it's a trend, that you're getting things that's for quality of life and economic development, and they go hand in hand. I think you guys get that, and I appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment one.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. We're now down to public hearings. We have one for tonight. This is on an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement to an economic development project located in Fairfield County, the execution and delivery of documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this ordinance and other related matters. We'll open this public hearing at 6:18 PM. Ms. Davis, do anyone sign to speak?
We have one speaker, Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield County. Again, it's good to see economic development and you guys trying the ad valorem taxes. We obviously need incentives to be competitive, and we need incentives to draw industry, jobs, and quality of life to our county. But I would also remind you that it's not always do we have to incentivize people to come to our county to set up a business. And there's one aspect that we could, for example, we could be thinking about. One of the top general job growths in the United States and the world is people working at home now. It's a big deal, and we need people to work at home in Fairfield County. We need people to work in Fairfield County. We need people to live in Fairfield County. And some of the communities across the United States are combining with their Midlands Tech counterparts and other educational authorities to reach out to industries and businesses that need people that work from home to operate their business. I know we have one councilman or two that do that. It's a real incentive for those businesses, and it's a real incentive that can be done in Fairfield County. My suggestion is to work with our sources, might be USC also, and of course Midlands Tech, and let's find out what those industries, number one, are. And number two, what type of workers and employment are they looking for and skills for people that could work at home? And obviously, it's with their computer and sometimes with their phone. But this is a big deal. It's growing across the United States, and it's something that could really solve a couple of issues, jobs, economy, and people living here and working here, and people not having to move out of here that get to work here. So, again, get with Midlands Tech and any other resource, including USC. Let's find out what industries, what employers are out there that are looking for a trained workforce that can work from home. And let's find out what skills they need, and let's get our educational resources, our schools, our Midlands Tech, honed in on those skills and train our organizations and our people so that they can stay in Fairfield County and be gainfully employed. It could be a mushrooming industry. Just think, employer of thousands of people who can work at home, how attractive is that? It's a great deal. So, give it some thought. Doesn't always have to be ad valorem taxes. Think out of the box. Get people trained to work from home. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else sign to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. At 6:21 PM, we'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Motion's been made and properly seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? A vote of six to zero, the public hearing is now closed. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. We are at third reading on ordinance number 714. This is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 535 to establish the rules and regulations pertaining to animal control in Fairfield County and revise Chapter Four Animals of the Code of Ordinance, Fairfield County, South Carolina.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Robinson.
I hereby make a motion to amend ordinance 714 to conform with the proposed written ordinance included in our agenda packets for this evening's meeting that is open for discussion and consideration by county council.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Motion's been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Pauly.
I want to move to amend that name and phone number under section 4.3 be updated to name or phone number, and that 8D under section 4-8 only pertain to dogs and cats.
Thank you, Mr. Pauly. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. On the amending motion, do we have any discussion on the amending motion? Mr. Pauly, give a little bit of explanation on the amending motion.
Well, I believe that the intention was for this to be name or phone number and not and, and I just wanted to get that corrected.
Mr. Roof.
Not sure on the protocol on this, but I would like to make a motion to table this third reading.
Okay. We do need to hear the amending motion first, and then if you wanted to make that motion, we could do that after we hear the amending motion, since that is on the floor first. We have to hear that first. Further on the amending motion, I just want to explain, we, Mr. Pauly and I had talked a little bit about that amending motion that was just made, and that was to make sure that Mr. Coleman and others don't have to worry about their cows and horses and chickens and things of that nature being in heat. We'd hate for that cause a problem for anybody, so we wanted to correct that. And that was some of the information on that motion in particular, to make sure that that were only pertaining to dogs and cats. All right. Do we have any other discussion on the amending motion? All right. Those in favor of the amending motion?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. By a vote of five to one, the amended motion is adopted. We are now to the main motion. Mr. Roof, if you'd like to make a motion to table it this time, would be the appropriate time to do so.
Okay. Thank you. I would make a motion to table this until this can be more thoroughly looked into. I think there's still some fine print before it's finalized so that everything's clear out. Discuss this with our administrator and as well, but I think before it's finalized, I think it'd be better to have it totally clear before we have vote the third reading.
Okay. We have a, the motion's been made. We have a second on that motion to table. A motion to table has been made and properly seconded. Do we have any discussion? All right. I'll put a little bit of discussion on that. Mr. Roof, I appreciate the intent, but I will say we've tossed this around, I think, long enough, and if we don't get it done now, God knows how much longer it's going to take. We've been talking about it for a year and a half to get to this point. So, I certainly understand the intent. That said, I think that all the concerns that have been raised have been addressed at this time by the amending motion that Mr. Pauly made and was adopted. The only thing that was not discussed in that, that was brought to council tonight, was about land that is leased. And in my discussion with the county attorney, of course, there are provisions within any given lease specific to the contract between the owner and the lessee, but as far as the purposes of the law go or this ordinance would go, it would be considered to fall under ownership of the person whose animal was. If Mr. Morgan would like to provide any more information there, correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Mr. Chairman, you are correct. If the provisions of this ordinance would apply to a person who would lease a property, i.e. an apartment, for example, would be one, is at least hold interest, which does give rights to an individual who possesses that property or occupies that property. In the same instance, in the Mr. Coleman's scenario with regards to leasing property, the same type of rules would apply.
Okay. So, I think that addresses all the concerns that have been brought to us at this time between that explanation and the amending motion that's been made. Again, I appreciate the intent. I understand it, but until this meeting, I've not heard any questions, so I would have, I would have preferred those who'd been submitted prior to the meeting. Do you have any specific questions on it that we might, could be able to address before we move on so that we could get this wrapped up tonight?
Well, I'm not sure that it can. I've talked to our administrator, Jason Taylor, and if I'm not, if I'm correct, I think he still thinks there are some things that need to be resolved, fine-tuned.
Again, I would add, as most people have said, this is a first step. I think probably we do need to, at some point in the future, as we find issues that arise, we may need to adjust the ordinance moving forward also.
Okay. And just to be clear, I'm fine with the basic, I mean, with the basic concept of it. Just a couple of things that were mentioned, and I don't have, I mean, I don't have a problem passing it if it still is, look back and make sure that all these little things that have been overlooked, and there still may be a few. But the basic concept of the penalizing for the cruelty and all that stuff, I'm all in for all of that. It's just the things that I'd hate to see somebody like was overlook, like what William Coleman brought up, a couple common sense things that don't need to be in there or need to be altered. That's my only concern.
All right. Any other discussion? Mrs. Goins.
Comment. I find it necessary that we go ahead and do this ordinance tonight, and it was my understanding that in the future, there will be changes and amendments necessary, but we need to lock this in on tonight, that we have something to start with.
Thank you, Mrs. Goins. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, I agree. It's definitely better than what we have in place as of now. Just like a car is going to need fine-tuning in the future, so I say we go on through with it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. We are going to vote on the motion to table. If you would like to table the item, then vote yes. If you would like to proceed with the item tonight and not table it, you would vote no. Those in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
All right. By a vote of five to one, the motion to table is unsuccessful. We are now back to the main motion, which is to essentially substitute what was included in our agenda packet as the ordinance that is on the table for tonight. Does we have any discussion on that? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. By a vote of six to zero, the motion is approved. We are now down to the ordinance itself, and we have to have a motion to provide third reading to the ordinance.
Second.
All right. Motion has been made and properly seconded that third reading be provided to ordinance number 714. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. By a vote of six to zero, technical vote of six to zero, with the one extension, third reading is provided to ordinance number 714. Y'all make me deal with the most parliamentary procedure on my last meeting. What's this all about? Just trying to see if I really had it, weren't you? We're now down to second reading, item B, ordinance. We're now down to second reading, item B, ordinance number 715, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease agreement between Fairfield County and Palmetto Health and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to provide second reading to ordinance number 715. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of six to zero, second reading is provided to ordinance 715. Item C, a second reading on ordinance number 713. This is an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes and incentive agreement to an economic development project located in Fairfield County, the execution and delivery of documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this ordinance and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded on number 713. Do we have any discussion?
I was going to add.
You look like you want to say something.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. We do have Ray Jones, our attorney, to advise on this. Council has any questions, we could defer until after executive session to take and answer any questions that you all have by Mr. Jones, and come out and act on it after that.
Certainly, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of six to zero, second reading is provided to ordinance number 713. We're now down to item D. This is a resolution, number 2018-11, approving an amendment to the distribution of revenues set forth in that certain amended and restated master agreement governing the I-77 corridor regional industrial park between Richland County, South Carolina, and Fairfield County, South Carolina, and other related matters. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded to approve Resolution 2018-11. I'd ask if we can get the administrator, Mr. Morgan, as well to explain.
I'll give a brief explanation and turn the details over to our attorney. Essentially, what happens when you have a fee in lieu of agreement, the count that, as opposed to ad valorem taxes, which have a split between a municipality, a school district, and the county, with a fee in lieu of it can go all to the county. But there are some opinions legally that say the school district and other government entities should get a share also. And it is common practice among a lot of other counties to do some type of sharing of the fee with the school district or the municipality, if it does lie to the municipality. We are suggesting a split of that fee that we have coming up going forward with our next project and those that would come after that, of roughly, I think, eighty, twenty. And I will turn it over to our attorney to go through the details of what that split, because it's not a straight split. We would have to recoup any cost that we put forward as far as an incentive, or that we may have put as far as buying the land or putting infrastructure in the ground. We'd have to recoup that before the split would take place.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council, Mr. Taylor is correct. What this resolution does is does, in general, provide for a split of those revenue stream, an approximately eighty to twenty percent split. But as Mr. Taylor said, it provides that the county recoups, it's what is called in the resolution, the economic development expenditures. That would be the money that the county has spent either in the acquisition of the property, upgrades, or improvements to the property, and other costs associated with the development and having that developer come into the county. The way that the resolution reads is all of those costs will be recouped, and the fees would be kept by the county up and until that point, those expenditures, which is determined solely at the county. The county's the one who's made those expenditures, they know what that amount is. Once that amount is reached, then going forward, the fees would be split eighty percent to twenty percent. Now, I think there are some considerations that might be best discussed legally in the executive session about some of the potential for other unintended consequences or intended consequences. So I would almost suggest, Mr. Chairman, that a final vote on the resolution take place after we have an executive session to discuss these.
All right, with that suggestion made, and I would agree with the suggestion, if we could get those who made the motion and second to withdraw, withdraw that second and then the motion, and then we will defer the item to after executive session.
So moved.
Who's seconded? Did you get that down? Mr. Pauli, would you redraw that second? Mr. Douglas, would you redraw the motion? All right, we'll defer that item until after executive session. Thank you. We are now down to board and commission minutes. We have minutes from the Airport Commission. I'm going to take a motion on those. Motion to approve, need a second?
Second.
All right, motion to approve and second has been provided on Airport Commission minutes as delivered to us in our information packets. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of six to zero, those minutes are approved. We're now down to board and commission appointments. Do all three of these together, since we have them all in front of us. And I think they're all reappointments as well. The Council on Aging Board, reappointment of Mr. Herb Brents from District Seven. Construction Board of Appeals, reappointment of Mr. David Brandenburg from District Seven. Behavioral Health, the extension of one year for Mr. Vernon Anderson from District One. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion has been made and properly seconded, and council approved the reappointments as stated. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? By a vote of six to zero, those reappointments are provided. We have no old or new business tonight. We're now down to the county administrator's report. Mr. Taylor.
Yes, just a few items tonight. Did want to make everyone aware, I think invitations have gone out, and I think it's been advertised in the newspaper, but on December 13th, 2018, from four to six, we will have an open house to introduce everyone to our new facility, the Providence Healthcare Facility, the new ER that we have participated in bringing here to Fairfield. So if you can come, please do. It'll be a nice event. Did have another item on Department of Social Services building. We had thought this was going to be worse than it was, so we put it on here to notify council. We had some pipes burst in the ceiling and caused some flooding, but in the end, we did not have to close the building down more than half a day, and it was a minor cost as far as fixing it in the end. We do have, I don't know, I was just checking, Paul Dove is not here tonight. He was going to update us on the Ridgeway Library and have the date as far as the ground opening. Do we know when that ground opening's going to be? Okay, again, we want to get that to everyone. I hate Mr. Dove's not here tonight to do that. It's customary that when we have a new council come in, we do a work session to bring everyone back up to speed on parliamentary procedure. Our current chairman has done a wonderful job, and we're going to miss him on that. But in order to train our new council and assist us in moving forward with making sure we follow parliamentary procedure, we're going to have a workshop that we tentatively have scheduled for January 6th for all council members.
January 26th.
Twenty-six, I'm sorry.
All right.
We do have one introduction, new employee, Officer Christie.
Okay.
Good evening, council. I'll go to the mic. Go all the way over. Good evening, I have a little bit of a sinus infection, so I apologize. So last Monday, we brought on Mr. Ian Ashford to be a community planner with the county. So hopefully, that'll take away a chunk of the responsibilities, get Platts out there much quicker, reviewing plans. So he'll be at the planning and zoning office. Mr. Ashford comes from Pennsylvania prior to, he's living in Chaping now, but he got a planning degree up in Pennsylvania. And he's going to take over a lot of the responsibilities with the floodplain management, plat review, plans, et cetera. So we're excited for that. Are there any questions, or did you want him to?
Glad to be here. We won't put him, we won't put him through the wringer tonight, Chris.
He's neither a Clemson or a USC grad, so I guess he's up for, you know, grabs, whoever wants to swing one way or the other, but.
Or for anybody's going to beat Alabama.
There we go.
Not this year it won't. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And that's all I've got. Thank you.
All right, we have no clerk to council's report tonight. We are now down to the second public comment session. Mrs. Davis.
We have two to speak tonight. First, Ms. Wanda Carnes to say thanks.
Good evening. Swanda Carnes, District Three. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Billy for his leadership as chairman of Fairfield County Council. As I reflect on where we were just four years ago, I'm amazed at the progress that's been made by our council under the leadership skills of such a fine young man. I am proud of you and want to publicly thank you for listening to the citizenship of our county. You have truly led by example, completely barring race or financial status, and I appreciate that. My prayer is that the upcoming council members will respect your decisions and your outstanding leadership, and we will all work together to make Fairfield County a better place to call home. And that was my last thing I was going to say. But I think that under the prior chairmanship, it was not very appropriate to applaud during council meetings, but under these circumstances, I feel is very appropriate and well deserved. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next to speak, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on year-end review.
Randy Bright, District One, Fairfield County. Wanda gave me a nice segue. Last year in review, you guys are a little shy, you won't toot your horn, so I'm going to talk about just all positive things that we've seen in this past year. And a lot of it has to do with everyone on this council, Jason, his team, et cetera. Let's just go down through some of those key things, in my opinion. And this is a challenge to the new council that starts next year. We've got two new members, we've got a lot of returnees. Can you keep the ball rolling? Let's see some of those balls that we've talked about. Of course, first and foremost was the medical deal. We've talked about that many a time. Going to save taxpayers about $700,000 a year. In that bargain, we get better medical facilities, newer medical facilities, and we retain all of our current medical facilities, or possible expansion for more. I mean, this is like the all-time deal ever in this county, so great, great job, guys. But it doesn't stop there. And part of making those great deals, and we talked about before, the unemployment rate dramatically dropping in this past year, the best in the state improvement. Yeah, that's not an absolute figure, we all know that, but it's relative. And still, relatively, we're the best in the state in improvement. And that's a very important number, unemployment rate, always. Something that I think has not been talked about enough, and really, I don't think that many people even are aware of it, is the improvement in the efficiency and the effectiveness in our government. And I start with, very novel idea for this state, is paying people for performance. Those in government who do a good job, they get rewarded for it. Those who do mediocre, they get a mediocre. Those who don't are letting, let it be known that they are not pulling their weight, they don't get a raise, and they've got work to do to improve. And I think that's extremely important for all of us, and it's fair. That's another key about it. Also, the intergovernment relations are much improved. The water coordination, it's really going to mean a lot for our future. This is another huge deal, no property tax increase, which is tremendous. All things considered, all the headwinds, we've no property tax increase. Why is that important? Because that is a huge impediment to growth in this county for future homeowners and for future businesses. Also, and I think Wanda brought this up, listening to the public. Finally, we're listening to the public. And the meetings are much more civil. Oh, and by the way, we don't have a barrier between, and you guys. So thanks for that. And the Commerce Center, upgrades to the Commerce Center, always improving. Got tons more. We'll save that for later. Thanks, guys. Good job.
Thank you.
Good benchmarks for the new guys coming in.
All right, all right, we are now down to county council time. I've been instructed to turn it over to Mrs. Goins for county council time. So Mrs. Goins, I will turn it over to you for the purposes of council time. Thank you.
Thank you. Usually, when I'm allowed to do something like this, I'm excited, I'm enthusiastic. But it is an honor and a privilege to do this presentation tonight, and we have two on tonight. And the first one is for someone that when I was doing the council meeting there, I called him Mr. Ruth. Except some days it is. But I know it's Mr. Ruth. Councilor, would you please come forward? It is an honor and a privilege and a pleasure to present this to you on tonight. And I can say genuinely that from the time that I first met you, you were the same as you are tonight. You've become a great friend. You and Brenda just cherish. I appreciate God allowing you to come to my life. You've been an asset to the team for many years. We want to thank you on tonight from the county council team, all our administrative staff, and from the public. It says, "Given in appreciation to Dan Ruth for outstanding service, Fairfield County Council, 2015 through 2018." And I asked Ms. Davis, when she mentioned this to me, I said, "Make sure you put a switch with this one." Because this person needs to be switched. Okay, I've got it.
Jimmy Ray, I didn't know you were leaving yet.
Chairman, yes, but you come forward. It is indeed an honor, a privilege, and a pleasure to present this to you. You've been a friend, you've been an excellent team leader, you've led by example. You're a tough young man, you need to stay that way. That's a good quality, a good thing. You have concern and compassion, not only for the team, but for the public as well, for the citizens of Fairfield County. You've served well. May God bless you, that tenuresly open doors for you forever, for your breakthrough on your journey in the future. And it says, "Given in appreciation to William B. Smith, Jr., for outstanding service, Fairfield County Council, 2015 through 2018, Chairman, 2017 through 2018." Yeah, we need to get all the team, the whole team, the whole gang. We're going to celebrate tonight. Come on, man. We'll get a chance to do this all, and we're going to celebrate. All the team, all the team. We want them to have memories for every day.
My team.
All the team.
I'm good. I'm good. I'm good.
We want to have all the team, all the team.
Yeah, and all the team.
And make sure you have, make sure you have. Okay, yeah, and just, and regular council time, I wanted to say, I missed saying on last time, boards of disability and special needs, I want to give a shout out to them, and I thank you for the economic impact that they make in Fairfield County. With one business, Bylow, they spend in excess of $100,000 a year. And in turn, Bylow gives a discount to them for the consumers, and it's just a great business relationship. And there are other businesses that work together. It just shows what it takes to build our county, build relationships, when businesses and agencies work together for the good of the citizens. So I wanted to say, tonight, that's my spotlight on agencies, the boards of disabilities and special needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'm going to let Jimmy Ray speak, because he had his hand up earlier. I didn't want to forget about it.
I'd like to shake fellow councilman Dan Ruth's hand for the years he has spent on the council, helping us reach goals that may not have been if not for him. His hard work and ethical behavior should be an example for all the council.
work and ethical behavior should be an example for all the council members to duplicate.
Thank you, Jimmy Ray. Anyone else? Mr. Ruth?
Yeah, I want to thank, thank both for the presentation and thank, I've enjoyed working with all of y'all. It's just, it's been great. It's been a pleasure with Jason and Davis and all our administration, Patty, keeping us all, keeping me straight all the time on where I'm supposed to be and what to do. And I've enjoyed just talking with all the citizens that come, mostly of y'all, on a regular basis. It's really been a pleasure working with all of y'all. And I remember a little over four years ago, when it first started coming, and what Randy Bright mentioned earlier tonight, very true. The change we're here dividing the citizens from the council, and it was very, what's the right word?
I'm sure you get the right word now.
I don't know what the right word is. Sometime vicious, I don't know. But it was, it was awful, truly, sometimes. And that was one of my goals, and I thank Billy and as well. When we came on in the prayers, we talked about it, and we discussed about it in the meetings, about changing the atmosphere here. So it's cordial. It's good to be, have differences of opinion as law, and we, but discuss back and forth and talk about it in a respectful manner. And that has definitely happened. And so thanks to all of y'all, and everything is so much better. But I really enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Paulie?
To the rehab employees, thank you for being here tonight and all the work you do for rehab in Fairfield County. We cannot thank you enough. To the Hoof and Paul, thank you for your hard work with animal ordinance and the love of animals to make sure they are taken care of. To Billy and Dan, I really have enjoyed working with both of you and have learned a lot. I wish you both the best in the future. And to the citizens of Fairfield County, have a safe and merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, for the last time. I just wanted to say thank you to the, the fitness, no, I'm sorry. Rehab, rehab for coming up here. You guys know I should have my picture up there, because I am the MVP over there. Definitely. Also, I would say that this last two years, along with Dan and Billy, has been great. For once, I would have wished our chair would allow Mr. Bright to extend his three minutes to blow our horn a little bit. Because we have accomplished a lot. And it's under your leadership. You know, I pray that we continue in that fashion, and hopefully we can accomplish a lot of great things for this county. Because I do see a difference, when I worked with the sheriff's department, I always would kiddingly joke who we have to lock up tonight if we go to council meeting and work it. But.
Were you talking about council members, or who were you talking about?
If so, I'm sorry. If, if, if needed be. But the atmosphere, we have accomplished a lot, and we are gonna continue to accomplish things. And I'm looking forward to the next two years.
Thank you. Mr. Paulie?
Jeff, I did tell him if it was you, bring two people.
Mrs. Goins?
Yeah. We celebrating tonight, okay? But I do want to say to the rehab team, thank you. We're gonna work hard to do what we need to do. We appreciate you. And I have proof positive in my husband of the work that you do. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Just real quickly, I'm not gonna be long-winded. I tried to think about something to say, and I don't like to get up and, you know, talk too much about the good things we've done. I hope that folks can see that. I think over the past four years, especially the past two, a lot of progress has been made. Mr. Bright mentions the unemployment rate improvement we've had over the past year. I suggest everybody look at that, the past two years, past four years, and see how well Fairfield County has fared there. We've done pretty well. And we've had a lot of challenges that we faced during, during the past four years, past two years, that this team has been together. And I just would say that I think all of those challenges have been met very well, very successfully. And I don't know how, how there could have been much better done, frankly. So I just want to say to everybody on this council team, especially the past two years, have been the most enjoyable for me, and not, not because I'm chairman, but because of the folks we have here that have made my job so much easier than it could have been. It could have been much more difficult. So I appreciate all of you and what we've been able to accomplish together. Staff, Mr. Taylor, you have done a fantastic job in your position. And I hope that y'all will recognize how far we outkicked our coverage with this gentleman. Because we did a very good job. I'm very fortunate to have him here, and some of the other folks that we have as well. And I say that about Mrs. Davis and our other staff who are sitting here with us. Fairfield County is very fortunate. We've done a lot in the past few years. And I have very, very much enjoyed my time on this council. I just want to say again, appreciate council team and all the citizens who've come in. We've had a lot of disagreements, citizens, council. You know, I've had a lot of arguments with these folks that y'all don't see, and that y'all don't hear about. It's probably a good thing. Probably a good thing. Because I always tried to pull them in my direction, and they always did the same. And that's really the way a good organization works together. And so I hope they'll continue to do that. But thanks to everyone who's been involved for the past two, four-plus years. I'm gonna miss it, but I'm sure I'll still be in touch with some of you. I did want to say real quick, just as a last note, specifically to Dan, since you're leaving as well, I've had a fantastic time working with you. And I know Brenda has missed you at home, some of the time that we've spent together. And so you mentioned some of these folks keeping you in line. Brenda, it's your turn. So you keep him in line, and if he, if he gives you any problem, just give me a call, okay? All right. Thanks again, everybody. I appreciate it.
And if she gives me any problem, I'm gonna call you, right?
That's right.
No, we'll call Rachel. There you go.
Thank you too, Billy. I appreciate it. I've surely enjoyed four years with you. Been, have been great.
Thank you.
Enjoyed it.
Thank you. I think Mrs. Davis has a quick announcement to make for folks, and then we'll go over to executive session. Mrs. Davis?
We'll be having a small reception after the executive session part of the meeting, and everyone is invited.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. We're now down to executive session. We have three matters for tonight. A is a legal matter. This is update on litigation against SNA S C E and G in reference to the abandoned V C summer new nuclear project. Item B is economic development update discussion regarding an economic development project located in Fairfield County and execution of documents in relation thereof. And C is a contractual matter, is update on lease for rehab center with Palmetto Health, USC. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Go on executive session for the reasons as stated. We have any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed? By vote of six to zero, council's now in executive session. Thank you.